I know who I hear this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get our meeting started. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, June 13th at 5:30 p.m. We have, I have a question for staff. Is this meeting being recorded on YouTube and is it available for people to see streaming?
It will be recorded. I have to upload the recording, but it will not be streamed.
And why is that?
Streaming because Logitech or Logic Capture, which is the software that we use to actually record the software, we have to record that in tandem with the live stream. But every time I try to record, Logic Capture will automatically close or it will just not work at all.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is my third request to have that, to have the meetings available through YouTube and on streaming. So I will be asking again next time.
Okay, I'll be uploading the recording, but I can't, I can't live stream it.
Right.
It just does not work. Until we figure out another software to use, I cannot record, I cannot live stream the recording.
Just as a matter of, you know, just, I know that the town council meetings are streaming live and if they have the capacity to do that, maybe you could share that with them and they can show you how to do that or provide you the software. It's a suggestion.
We will do everything we can, share the recording.
Because I hear a lot of feedback from folks that would like to see it outstreamed.
I would disagree.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to call the meeting to order at 5:34 p.m. First, I want to say that all members are present and next on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance, so please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation on the draw, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Is there any changes that any of the commission members would like to recommend or staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda as it is. And then next on the agenda is approval of minutes for May 9th, 2024. Have the commission members had a chance to go view those minutes and do you have questions or comments? Hearing none, I recommend we approve the minutes as they have been presented. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And next on the agenda is public comment on non-public hearing planning commission items. Do we have any speakers for that? Okay, we have two speakers. First speaker is Nigel Long. Mr. Long?
Chairman, before we get started with the public comments, just for the public's advocacy, this part of the, of the meeting is for general public comments. If you're here tonight for zoning text amendment 2403, which concerns the definition of maritime resort, you're welcome to comment on that during the public hearing.
I can hear you really well. You're going to do it.
All right, we'll try again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So I just wanted to inform the, the public who's here that this part of the meeting is for general public comments on, preferably on non-public hearing items. If you have comments that you would like to make, they're encouraged to be made during the public hearing portion for the zoning text amendment that we have tonight, if that's what you're here to speak on. If you're not here to speak on that, then this would be the time to provide general public comments to the commission.
Where can we sign to?
Here's the signed sheet.
For the general public comment?
Yeah.
It's the other one that's in there.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Long.
I understood that correctly. Nigel Long on my line, Lynn Haven Call. And I understand priorities you have this evening. I was slightly surprised on your agenda not to see the capital improvement plan, the CIP. It was discussed at a recent town council meeting and my understanding was that they were referring that back to the planning commission for further, planning commission for further input on the items that were on the CIP. So I just wanted to make sure that didn't get missed because I think, you know, the, the big items and the big forward seeing projects that were listed on there are very important to the town and I, I didn't want that to get missed. If you'd prefer me not to stand up again, I'll say some, something very quickly about the.
Oh, I, I would prefer you hold your comment on, on that public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other, we have William Knuckles, is Mr. Knuckles here? And with that, any more speakers than on public comment on non-public hearing planning commission items? Okay, with that, we're going to close on public comment at 5:36. And next on the agenda is the report at public hearing on definitions for maritime resorts.
Number seven.
Oh, number seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yes, thank you. So I offer it up to any planning commission members who want to give a report on the work that they've been doing. Starting with, so was there any follow-up from the CIP?
No.
No, there's no follow-up. Okay, anyone else?
No, I don't really have any additional information on resiliency. That's sort of a little bit small because hopefully Darrell will sign me up.
Is Darrell here online?
She, she's here, but she's, she's participating as her observer tonight.
Yeah, so I need to follow up with her and I can't.
Can't hear you.
Okay, on the resiliency committee, there really is no progress, conditional progress to date. All right, well, thank you. And so with that, we can move on to number seven. And before we actually do that, I just wanted to ask if there are any of the marina owners here, with the exception of Mr. Kyle. Okay, I just wanted to get, you know, a sense of if they were here. So I, I just want to give a little brief outline about what we did last month and talk about the next item that we're discussing, which is going to amend that to Article 20, which is the definitions section of the code, to consider adding a definition for maritime resort. So firstly, we're going to do three things. And that is, we're going to take testimony from the public and read out written testimony as well. Second will be the staff report and then third will be the planning commission discussion. Just to summarize real quickly what we did at our main meeting, the PC, the planning commission is currently seeking public comment tonight about whether we should add a definition of maritime resort to Article 20, which is the definitions section of the code, and currently there is no definition for maritime resort. Specifically, we've been asked by Mr. Schiff, owner of the yacht club, to determine whether temporary RV camping spaces should be included in the definition for maritime resort. For those who don't know, RV camping and overnight camping is not a legal use in seat one zoning as it currently exists. However, Mr. Schiff, owner of the yacht club, has told the planning commission at the main meeting that the yacht club has four existing spaces for RVs and our zoning administrator, Mr. Dooley, has confirmed that those four spaces are legal but not non-conforming. On a separate track, separate from that altogether, is our discussion of what we discussed in reference to the maritime commercial zoning district. That is, it's in the code, but there's no place in town that is designated as maritime commercial district and it is not on our zoning map. I have a copy of the map, if anyone with the zoning map, if you'd like to see it, but you can also look at the zoning map on our website, the town's website. The MC zoning district, maritime commercial zoning district, is not the subject of our public hearing. The public hearing tonight is to discuss what should be in definitions in Article 20 for maritime resort. The public hearing has been advertised to discuss definition and that is my understanding that any discussion, discussing anything else would require another public hearing. And so with that, I'm going to open up the discussion now and here from our testimony from the community. So I'd like to open the comments.
Do you want to, I like the usual, I guess.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Chairman, I think that for the commission's benefit, it would be helpful for, for staff to do the presentation.
Okay.
And then that benefit gives the, the audience a chance to understand the context.
Yes.
Of this and, and provide their comments based on that context.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint presentation and some of your, some of your comments may be redundant, but we'll filter into it accordingly. So start with, the purpose of zoning text amendment for ZTA 2403 tonight is a town initiative to define land use term maritime resort for inclusion in Article 20, which is our definition sections of the Colonial Beach zoning ordinance. With the public's advocacy, there are no other planning commission land use applications associated with the zoning text amendment tonight. As, as Chair pointed out, it's certain to develop a definition for maritime resort. Next slide. So why are we defining maritime resort? A public inquiry was received in April of 2024 concerning whether recreational vehicle camping spaces can be incorporated within a maritime resort land use. However, at present, a maritime resort is undefined, is an undefined land use term that requires a conditional use permit in the maritime commercial district zone. You do have a codified ordinance for maritime commercial, but it's, but there are no land, there's no land zone in the town of Colonial Beach for maritime commercial. And just as another point of reference, maritime resort, the land use only appears as a conditional use permit or in the maritime commercial zoning district. Okay, next slide. So public outreach for zoning text amendment 2403. At the planning commission meeting of May 9th, 2024, the commission directed zoning text amendment 2403 to be advertised for a public hearing at tonight's meeting to garner public input on helping the commission draft a definition. The commission also directed staff to conduct public outreach to inform the community about zoning text amendment 2403 to the greatest extent possible. Staff's efforts to inform the community about ZTA 2403 included advertising twice, the public hearing, the freelance Star newspaper, which is a state department anyway. We also advertised through county social media and staff met with the eight marina owners in Colonial Beach. Next slide. So to start the conversation on the definition, crafting a definition for maritime resort, staff revised the original draft definition presented to the commission at its main ninth meeting and crafted an alternative definition for the commission's end of public consideration tonight. That definition was crafted by full staff and the town attorney during the discussion of zoning text amendment 2403. As for the initial draft definition that we're proposing tonight for the commission in the public's consideration is as follows. Maritime resort, the property developed and maintained with an active marina, restaurant, hotel, motel, and commercial recreational establishment for patrons. In maritime resort, they also include the optional development of recreational vehicle camping spaces for rent on patrons, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit with concurrent operation of an active marina, restaurant, hotel, and a commercial recreational establishment on the property. No recreational vehicle shall be used to camp or park on a property for more than thirty consecutive days and more than thirty total days in a twelve-month period. Additionally, no RV camping space shall be used for permanent housing or storage of any kind. Excellent. How it comes to the kind of. Just to clarify, the, a definition was referenced in the advertisement, so that definition is before you. Virginia Code Section 15.
And you found.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So the original definition that you talked about last time in the advertisement records was made to where you could see that definition. Now, Mr. Dooley has proposed a different definition tonight, but you really need to start off with the original that was sent out. And Virginia Code Section 15.2-2285 allows that at the meeting, after it's been advertised, the planning commission may make appropriate changes to the proposed ordinance.
May I ask, is that attachment A that you're referring to?
I'm agreeing from the code. I don't know what, that's, that's attachment. The definition that's attached to number one to your staff report.
Okay.
So basically what I'm saying is you shouldn't jump to the new definition, you should start with the definition that was advertised.
Absolutely. And if we could take a minute then and look at attachment A, because I believe that was the one we discussed and that was the one that was advertised. Is that accurate?
It was advertised as a general advertisement to identify and develop a definition. The both definitions are, were available for public, for public to read at the, during the operating hours of the community development department if they need.
So with that, we can reserve our questions until we hear and have public comment. So what I'd like to do.
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
I finished.
Oh, I'm, I'm still.
Okay, let me, let me finish the, the staff report. Okay, so the cross of the definition that I have in the entire slide, this is the revised definition I'm referring to. The cross of the draft, the draft definition requires the presence of an active marina, restaurant, hotel, hotel, and a social recreational establishment for patrons. These land, these land use activities are all defined in Article 20 of the Colonial Beach zoning ordinance and also identified in your staff report. The definition also provides the option for a potential development of RV camping spaces with the approval of a conditional use permit and ongoing operation of an active marina, restaurant, hotel, motel, and commercial recreational establishment. The requirement of conditional use permit does not mean that proposing RV, proposing RV camping spaces will be automatically approved. It does, it requires a land use evaluation of the proposed property to determine if such use has environmental or land use impacts such as, on such as impacts on public infrastructure, traffic, compatibility, aesthetics, and other potential issues that can be reasonably mitigated for the operation of such a proposed use or unconditional use. If the potential impacts cannot be reasonably mitigated to a level of less than significant, the conditional use permit can be denied by the town under Articles 16-5 and 16-9 of Colonial Beach zoning ordinance. As the committee's, the chair had pointed out a little earlier, it's important to recognize that developing a definition for maritime resort does not include evaluating specific properties that may or may not benefit from the definition. However, it is important to recognize the general potential broad implications of the definition. At the prior planning commission meeting on May 9th, the commission has openly considered RV camping spaces within the definition. However, no decisions were made without having the entire commission and the public weigh in on the issue. Tonight, planning commission will conduct a public hearing on zoning text amendment 2403 to consider all public input on the initial draft definition of maritime resort to gain public feedback and suggestions on refining the definition as appropriate. Developing a definition should have objective standards to recognize the land use and be readily understood for consistent interpretation and application. The commission has already received numerous emails concerning zoning text amendment for its consideration and those emails and letters are, some of them were in your packet, there's been two supplemental, supplements that since the planning commission packet went out last Friday, the conditions public comments and those are in front of you tonight. And for the public's reference, there's the same emails are in the back hour for the public reference, so you can see what other people have emailed the town about this issue. So alternatives, after holding a public hearing considering the staff report, all public testimony would have been verbal as well as other information presented to the commission. The planning commission could either accept, modify, or create a distinctly different definition for maritime resort at tonight's meeting and adopt the attached planning commission resolution and attach that number two of the staff report, or they could continue the zoning text amendment to the next planning commission meeting for the consideration. Recommendation, staff this time recommends the commission provide feedback on how it desires to proceed with zoning text amendment 2403. And with that concludes my, my staff presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments to the commission.
Thank you. I did want to go back to that question about, under recommendations, it is referenced that our discussion of last month is in attachment number one, there are two options there. So I'm just trying to verify, that's where we have to work from because of the requirement for notice. Is that right?
Yes, we have.
Okay. All right, so everyone who on the commission, it's attachment number one that we discussed last time.
And Chairman, just to be super clear, what staff did, the, the original definition that was presented at the last meeting is, is the top paragraph for attachment number one. And then at the second paragraph, which says revised draft definition number two, is what staff has, is suggesting as, as a refined, a refinement to the definition. Staff and the town attorney felt that the revised definition provides a little more clarity, a little more objectivity and perhaps less we'll need to sort of understand in the prior definition, but of course that's up to the, the commission to make the determination on how it wants to proceed with the definition.
All right, thank you. I know this is kind of confusing and so we're trying to present it in the clearest manner possible. So with that, we'll go, go ahead and open public comment.
May I ask, Mr. Dooley, definitions one says definition number two and then one says definition number two, was there a definition number one that we're missing or is that a typo?
No, that's, that's correct. The, the commission, when it was presented for last meeting, there were two definitions. One that included, one that included RV camping as part of the definition and the other, and the original definition did not include RV camping. The commission chose to, to consider RV camping as part of the definition, but because there were two members of the commission who were not here and the commission wanted public feedback, they wanted to start with the broad definition that included RV camping. So this is to reference the fact that the, the commission pulled out definition number two as the one they wanted to advertise for consideration. And what I've done in the revision is an adjustment to the original definition the commission pulled out for advertising for public hearing.
That is a little confusing to me as well because I remember definition number two did not include RVs.
There was one, there was two, yes, there were two, there were one with and a bow.
Yeah, so we can look at both, both definitions, but still we can include or not include RVs.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and open public comment on this matter. So I'd like to open public comment on zoning text amendment ZTA 20, 2403 for, to amend Article 20 definitions of the Colonial Beach zoning ordinance and to add a definition for the land use term maritime resort. And with that, public comment is open at 5:55.
Chairman, just to also surprise the commission, you have, before you, several written comments and the commission's pleasure, how we want to address those.
Could we read those into the record now, the ones that you just received?
The one, alternate or just the ones we received?
No, just the, the two that we just got this afternoon.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, if we could start with that.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we'll go ahead and read the email comments first and then we'll take testimony from folks here. That way you can hear the benefit of both. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start then with the ones that I received today. This is, in front of you is the second supplemental comments, the additional course comments received, second supplement. And the first email is from John Braper, dated June 13th. It says, Mr. Dooley, this email is in support of Jim Rye's proposal to expand the Colonial Beach yacht center and in short-term RV camping sites. Our yacht club members frequent this marina several times per year and always enjoy the relaxing atmosphere of Colonial Beach. In addition to helping the yacht center remain a viable business, this proposal will bring added tourist dollars and help make Colonial Beach a vacation destination. And it's signed by John Braper, Commodore of Yacht Club. Second email is from Mike, the email address is mike@mikehigh.com. And it says, Mr. Dooley, the Colonial yacht club established in Colonial Beach 51 years ago also believes this will help make Colonial Beach a vacation destination for many voters on the East Coast. As noted, as noted in the email I sent you earlier, Michael High Commodore Colonial.com. Listen to it, receive today.
All right. And then with that, we'll go ahead and have, read into your record the email that was sent in for testimony.
All right, I'm going to start with the ones that are in your packet and then Mr. Dooley will, will hear that one from there with the.
Mr. Dooley, just a moment. Chair, could we go ahead and have the people that are here make their statements so that they don't have to wait for the.
I, I, I think that they will have the benefit then of hearing all the books that are written also, so.
Okay, in the past, we've had people that were here that have intended to wait and with the exorbitant number of emails we've received on us, I think allowing them to have their, their say.
Well, they, you know, clearly, clearly we're going to hear both. So if it's your preference then to go ahead and have the speakers, as long as the speakers agree to stay and listen to all the testimony, that was my purpose. So we'll then go ahead and move forward with public comment from people that's here. And with that, we'll go ahead and start with.
Mr. Dooley, just, Mr. Mike, here. I don't think you can put a requirement on the speakers to come to give public comment. You cannot require them to stay, so.
Oh, no, I'm not required, we're not going to lock the door. I'm not required, we're not going to lock the doors. So just wanted to share that. Okay. With that, we're going to call our first speaker, William Knuckles.
Hello, William Knuckles, 204. We on? Yep.
I, I don't really hear.
Seems to.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Just to make sure, sorry, I have a little bit of a lag. Are we on items six or eight? We're on eight.
Eight, that's correct.
Bill Knuckles, 204 Monroe Bay Avenue, calling with a couple of things, one of which is a sort of a process question. I think we really need to get out of the trap that we've been in, not just on this topic but on other topics about when an individual wants to do something with one piece of town, somehow this becomes a zoning change for the entire town. It's not a bad situation to be in, both in this particular instance, but just in general as far as procedurally for the town, particularly with issues where individuals come up with connections to either folks either at this body or at the town council meeting. It seems to me that it's easier to go through this route than it is to just say, hey, I got a weird property, I'd like to have parents, like to have a hearing on this, actually talk about my heating situation. Really, we go forward and we try and actually change the entire thing. So while a lot of comments are about the, the property at hand, we're really talking about changing the town. We're not talking about changing one parcel, because if it's about parcel, that's not planning, right? Planning is about a vision for the town and how things are going to be across the board. As it goes to the specific parts of this, in addition to looking at the ordinance language for this, I'd like to have, and I have copies here that I'm going to leave for you to take under consideration, this is a bit of an outlier. When you look at the model floodplain ordinance, both coming from FEMA has provided, or some research that the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation did on looking at RVs, there's nobody encouraging this. So, you know, there's like four of these in Richmond, four of these in Virginia Beach, couple of them in Richmond. Generally, even in those places, they had to deal with his grandfather, right? Nobody in the coastal hazard game is doing anything to encourage this use. And Shenandoah County, Virginia, Colonial Heights, Virginia, City of Fairfax, Virginia, City of Falls Church, Virginia are putting in language actually to explicitly prohibit RV use period in the floodplain because it's a coastal hazard, right? It's a coastal hazard because these aren't always intended. It's becoming a problem in West Virginia where these things sort of become like, folks go have the premium spot, and then they leave it, and then they go back to DC, and they're going back and forth, but they're not there on storm days, and it's becoming a problem for those communities to try to figure out, how do we come up with the resources to deal with these things, which are about literally like a floating sandpan that blows around? Not applicable, like in terms of people who are like, oh, what happens to boats too? But we can't move the boats. That's a water dependent thing, same thing with boat cars. RVs could go somewhere else, that's why they're not generally urged to be in the floodplain. Like I said, nobody else other than this community in the state seems to be looking at any language that would encourage this use in that area. I mean, I can't imagine us being the only outlier. It's a weird thing to be doing. I know we haven't done the resilience planning, and we're sort of behind on that, but this is going in completely now the direction as the rest of the state, and it's going in the direction that the nation is not going as it relates to coastal hazards. It's really short sighted. Mr. Dooley, can I please, is your name, please? This is a copy as provided by the state of the, the language that I was talking about and the kind of outlier aspect that we're talking about putting ourselves in.
Thank you. And next we have Wes Shatlett. Mr. Shatlett, you have all the other speakers three minutes, and we'd like you to state your name and your address.
My name is Wes Shatlett, 1302 Irving Avenue, Colonial Beach, Virginia. Good evening. I'm in, I'm actively in support of the RVs, I'm being approved. I think people need a, they want to view. I know I'm fortunate, I have a view. People in RVs want to view. We used to have RV, and, and I just see where it's not going to impact that much. So I'm in approval. I have no problem with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Mark Hunter.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hunter, 2815 Grayfield Street. And I'm also in favor of the changes to make that RV place, and reason being it's going to bring more tourists to the town, and it's going to bring more money to the town. And that's very important to all of us. I have no problem with the changes that need to be made to make that happen, and I'm full agreement with it. Thank you.
And next we have Linda Brubaker.
My name is Linda Brubaker. I reside at 17 Lincoln Avenue here in the beach. Latin Chair, members of the commission, I respectfully oppose this amendment in its entirety. I agree with Mr. Knuckles on many of his points. To say we're going to get more tourists from this, that's a wonderful thing, but are these four little RV sites going to impact our tourism that much? I doubt it. And what land use impact will it have? Who's going to be responsible for the sewer, the water, and all of those things that RVers require? We just sold a 38-foot big wheel with the two, I don't know, full-time duly. Now to tow that down Irving Avenue is going to be atrocious. To tow it down Monroe Bay Avenue is even worse. We have golf carts, we have little children on bikes, we have mothers pushing baby carriages. I don't think that the broad implications of this amendment will suffice what we want our town to be. If it isn't that, at the restaurants, at other commercial places, certainly Mr. Schick has the land, he does, but who is going to be responsible for bringing that land up to where RVers need to be? And as far as RVers needing a view, I managed an RV park for 10 and a half years. I know what RVs require. I know how much they do. I know how much trash they leave behind, whether it's a 50-foot airstream or whether it's a tent. Are you going to eliminate tenting? It has to be an RV. What's the definition of an RV? So these are my points. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And next we have David Lipschaw.
Hi, David Lipschaw, 21 Lean Street. I am Board Director on the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here representing the board member of the chamber. We did send in an email, which I thought was going to be read, but it's okay. We understand, respect the concerns discussed by our community, and we believe that it's possible to find a balance to address the interests of both our citizens and our business members. We are in support of adding the maritime resort use design regulations. However, we also recognize the need for specific policies related to RVs to ensure this addition aligns with our town's characters and needs. We recommend implementing a 30-day minimum stays, which was mentioned, restricting the number of contiguous RV pads, and possibly introducing regulations on the movement of RVs once they are part of the many RV owners bringing along a car or golf cart, which means there are RVs often remain stationary throughout their, is a common practice within the RV community. Some of the benefits that we see as a chamber is the boost in local economy. RV parks attract tourists who spend money at the restaurants, shops, golf cart rounds, taxi services, and more. With the 30-day stay, this will contribute to local business over extended period. It does promote tourism. The designation offers affordable and feeling accommodations for travelers, encouraging more visitors to our beach town. This could help offset the recent declining of overall tourism in our town. It enhances seasonal, seasonal flexibility. RV parks cater to both peak and off-season visitors, helping to balance tourism throughout the year, reduce the impact on seasonal fluctuations. It diversifies accommodation options. By offering a range of accommodation types, we can make our town more appealing to a broader audience, including families, retirees, and budget-conscious travelers. And of course, it makes the revenue generation. The town will benefit from additional round the streets through taxes and fees associated with the RV park, as well as increased tax revenue for local businesses such as restaurants, coffee shops, and breweries. So in summary, the chamber, board, and adjutant is firmly in favor of the maritime resort designation. We believe it presents a significant opportunity in our town, our businesses, and our community as a whole.
Thank you. And next we have Marsha Feldman.
Hello, I'm Marsha Feldman. I live at 1605 Beach Avenue. I'm against, first of all, I'm a little confused. I thought this had to do with the C2 zoning. Is this a different kind of zoning? Is this a different kind of zoning than the C2 zoning?
We don't have a C2 zoning.
I thought.
It's C1.
C1.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is this a different section than C1?
Ms. Feldman, let me, let me clarify. The, again, the zoning text amendment is for definition for maritime resort, okay? That's the land use definition over here. The maritime resort, the maritime resort land use is only in the maritime commercial zoning district of the town. It's not in C1, it's nowhere else, it's just in the maritime commercial zoning district. We do not have a maritime land use zone on our zoning map. We do have a codified in our code for one, but there are currently no land uses in the town that are zone in C or maritime commercial. I just wanted to clarify that so you understand.
Okay. So this would be another reason, in our case, mainly down at the point or somewhere along the water. Well, you know, we have, this is in C1, but also are all of the other marinas, we have seven altogether, as well as parts of Colonial Avenue in C1. So while we're looking at definitions, and that is, would include definitions for the entire town, we're specifically looking at C1 because we have someone requesting that we do that. But then you said you were looking at C1, but C1 is all over town, correct?
In, in parts. I have a copy of.
Okay, well, to my question, Dooley, zoning map. You couldn't put one, if there's a C1 on Colonial Avenue, you couldn't put one there.
At this time, the maritime resort, maritime resort land use is not permitted anywhere in town with the exception of the maritime commercial district, and that requires a conditional use permit for maritime.
Maritime commercial is down on the point.
No, ma'am.
It doesn't exist in town anywhere.
It doesn't exist.
It does not, it does not exist on the land use map.
Okay. So then eventually, once you decide on this, then you have to decide where it is.
If, if it's possible that if somebody wanted to, if we have a definition for maritime resort, it's possible that somebody would then come back and say, hey, I would like to, I would like to include this land use in a different zone designation. Or they might say, hey, I would like to, to maritime commercial.
I'm going to have to say that we should go ahead and listen to the other speakers.
Okay, let me finish. Yeah, please, I was going to say, I'm against it for the simple reason that I think RVs are too big for our roads, number one. Number two, I don't think they will create more business for our restaurants. I mean, we have used other, we've had other camping and other things, nobody uses it as a restaurant if they can feed themselves elsewhere. So I think it's negative impact on our businesses, not positive, but will also be in the impact on our hotels. So I, I, I'm against it. We got rid of one so-called trailer park, which was an eyesore to begin with, and maybe this is going to be luxury, that's highly possible. I just don't think it belongs in town. I think it belongs out in county somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Nigel Wong.
Hello, I'm Chad, and I still live at 105 Lee. Certainly, to me, it, it makes sense that the planning commission should adopt some regulations to define what happens in a maritime commercial district. And in general, we already have, I understand, in one of the marinas for RV locations, sort of grandfathered it. I think the question for the planning commission is how can RVs within town be compatible with the overall life in town? And I think you may want to consider, for example, whether the definition that you've included on page four of what a recreational vehicle is, is sufficient. Perhaps you would want to consider a smaller vehicle as being, as being an acceptable recreational vehicle. Because clearly, the question of getting huge RVs down the streets, and I speak as someone who comes 35 years ago from a country that couldn't accommodate anything like that on their streets either, I think you modeled the streets here after those winding lanes in the United Kingdom. So I think you should consider closely what size of recreational vehicle would be acceptable. I think you should also consider carefully whether 30 days is the appropriate length of time. The statement earlier about RVs becoming a liability in bad weather would be covered if, I think, more adequately, recreational vehicles could only be in place for a week or two and couldn't stay in, in a location permanently. Or maybe the requirement is that they have to be permanently occupied, or maybe your skills are far better than mine in understanding the way to do that. But I think there are, I think recreational vehicles, where there is space for them within marinas are appropriate. I think the question is how do you determine what can be done for the benefit of the community? Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jeanette Holman.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Can you hear me? I don't know whether I'm for or against the outcome of this, and I understand we're here to define the definition, to have the definition of maritime use, right? Is that correct? So I want you to keep in mind as you write this definition, I live, I'm sorry, I live at 216 Monroe Bay Avenue. And the town has spent a lot of money coming down in the asphalt in the last two years. It looks beautiful. I can tell you there's already some damage taking place because of general truck use, contractor use, delivery trucks, big Amazon panel trucks now. And there's a safety issue. If you have, for instance, it's a very narrow road, and as someone said before, there are people jogging, bicycling, children, bathing carriages, joggers, golf carts. It's a very narrow road, as we all know. And if you have two maximum 40-square foot RVs needing, it's going to be an issue. Okay. So I'm, I'm concerned about the safety issues. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but that, that worries me. The second thing that worries me besides safety issues on Monroe Bay Avenue, which is already a speed zone, and, you know. The second thing that really concerns me is the future. The future of Monroe, the end of the point. And I don't know, the chicks are friends of mine, I believe. What's going to happen down there? Is this going to be a gated community? I just got back from the beach in South Carolina. Is this going to become a gated, caricky community where the only people who can go down there are people who are paying to keep a beautiful, you know, I don't know, 14-foot, 16-foot RV, and they're staying there for 22 days, and it's a gated community? We all know what the future will bring. So my next question would be, would there have to be conditional use? Topics coming up in the future for our council, town council, to discuss what could happen in the future. So I'm worried, I'm worried about the future for the point. It's a beautiful area, and we all love going down there eating and watching the sunsets. So, let's see. Oh, someone brought this up earlier about tax revenue and going out to eat and going to coffee shops. RVs who have a. RVs who have a hundred thousand dollar RV are gonna be drinking their coffee at their RV?
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Kao Chik.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to pass out to the, to the commission, some photographs of the park that the gentleman who was interested in purchasing, where he had, had sold. Now, he hasn't made an offer on Marina, and it remains to be seen if he does. In any case, I am interested in doing this, whether he purchases some Marina. This gives you an example of what I also would like to see, you know, after the end of the year. It's interesting that last month, one of the commission members showed up that he was not aware that marinas and RVs went together as a combined use. And historically, they haven't, but since COVID, and prior to COVID started, it's become much more of a commonplace thing. And actually, I was just in one of my magazines, I pulled out Soundings, which is a big magazine in the voting industry, article in February two thousand and four, entitled Diversity Portfolios: RVs and Marinas, Resort Facilities, Boats and RVs Are Gaining Popularity and Reputation for Good Business Sense. And it talks about a gentleman who had a friend that was a contractor, and he had a campground, and then another friend, he just had a Marina, and they decided that they were, had the same facilities, restaurant, pool, septic, all the type of, and they said, you know, we will need to put this together. And they bought some property on the Intermodal Waterway, and of course, it filled up by Labor Day weekend of the same year. This is something that is, and I'll be glad to give you this article too, it's more than to read here, but it actually, it is a great example on how things are changing. I'm in Colonial Beach, love the past and don't want things to go back, you know, there are going to change. Of course, there used to be a bit campground down there years ago, before I entered, which had up to twenty, thirty people, that, you know, that of course, since went by, and now it has turned around and come back full circle, where this kind of facility is, could be a big help for our Marina. Diversifying is important. When I bought the Marina, you diversify by, you know, enlarging the restaurant, by bringing in a repair facility, by having boat brokerage. I was a commercial waterman, I sold brokerships. So all of these things were diversifying to be able to make Marina affordable. Today, Marina's, light, small farms are going by the wayside. Mom and pop facilities are dying, and that's because they can't make enough money to support the waterfront usage that they require, so they have to diversify. They have to become resort facility. I do understand and am concerned about some of the things that people have talked about here, and those issues would be addressed under the conditional use permit that is required by this definition of a commercial, a resort commercial, a maritime resort. So issues of roads, issues of environmental, issues of flood plain, all of those issues would be taken care of within the conditional use permit. So, and I am a one-hundred percent agreement that there should be a conditional use permit, because the public should have an input to see exactly what would be, how it would affect them, and what the positives and negatives of having some RV sites down at Marina or any other Marina that it may fit. I am the largest Marina with eight acres, so I'm the only one that pretty much can do that. But you can't spot zones. I can't come and ask you for a definition, and for me to have RVs at my Marina, that would be totally wrong and is against the law. So we have to allow this opportunity for all marinas, and only... Is that a five minute?
Yes.
Since I get, I get five minutes.
I think you said it was five?
Yes, it's five.
Oh, it's five.
Well, I would be glad to answer any additional questions, and like I said, I think any, any issues of public status will be addressed under a conditional use permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question of Mr. Dooley. In C one, are RVs conditional use?
No, ma'am.
So that would require a complete rezoning, then?
That would require, that would need to require the, that would require a RV camping land use in the C one zone. The only, the only place in our town ordinance that allows for any camping is in the A one zone, which also does not exist on our land use map. It's codified that it doesn't exist on our land use map.
Okay, so that's pretty straightforward. Then what we can do now is go ahead and listen to the email comments.
We do have, just to clarify, we do have Mr. Ryan on the, online, I don't know if he wants to make any comments?
I just had a question about that. I don't ever recall public comment being given by someone not present. So we, that's a, that's a different thing than we've done in the past, ever.
Fairly true. In the past, we have done it either in common person or in email comments, some of those are always.
Yeah, so in that sense, I think out of fairness to everyone who came here, and those that wrote their comments, I think that we could definitely entertain a written comment for Mr. Ryan, but to ask that he be granted an extreme exception to that rule, I think is kind of unfair to everyone else. So in that sense, I would, you know, ask that he present his comments where I can.
I just want to make you aware.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna start off the written public comments from those that were in your packet, the attachments A, excuse me, attachment three A through three M, and then we'll, Mr. McGon will read the supplemental comments that were received between June eighth and June twelfth in your first supplement. All right, so attachment, attachment three is from Thomas DeVincenzo. DeVincenzo, my apologies. Please consider this a no to creating an RV campground in the Marina area of Colonial Beach. This would be zero benefit to the town, it would stretch the infrastructure of, of our town, especially during summer months, extremely thin, and would do harm to our narrow streets that currently enjoy ball cart access. We have already allowed UTV vehicles, which are not slow moving vehicles and are not ball carts, to crowd our streets. There are plenty of campsites opportunities just outside the town that are currently set up for this type of activity. This is a bad idea, and an accident just waiting to happen. Huge RVs versus small ball cart, no RV in Marina area. Thank you. Attachment three B.
And we're using the timer on all these, right? They should go beyond. Thank you.
Attachment three B is from Joyce Reimer to the commission. In the nineteen eighty-three history of Westmoreland County, published by the Westmoreland County Board of Supervisors, it states, quote, "As a planned development Colonial Beach exemplifies the finest qualities of urban design, its public-spirited, reserving the most valuable river and creek front portions of our town for common use. Our beach is certainly the key portion of town, of town referred to in this passage. But for a great many people, the far end of Colonial Beach, quote, point, unquote, is the gem of the community. As many local people may go to dockside restaurant and tiki bar or the yacht club and, and, and visit the beach. I have taken so many visitors out there to enjoy dinner, brunch, or evening, and they have fallen in love with the town because of it. Spending time with friends and loved ones sitting outside the old tiki, the tiki bar area as the boats come into Monroe Bay against the backdrop of the sun, of the setting sun has been one of life's most sublime pleasures for me. Watching children play while adults enjoy a game of cornball or dancing and singing has been an absolute delight. The loss of this resource could do untold damage to the tourist economy of town because that spot can, can match the beauty, can't match the beauty of almost anywhere in the world, but I have traveled enough to know. The owner, Kyle Schick, and Dockside Management have done a wonderful job in their stewardship of this precious landmark over the years. Of course, it's private property and subject to sale, but like Fonzclis out on the Rapaheh Hennick River, a natural treasure that demands a use worthy of, worthy of its caliber. Plus, there is something that could help make this possible. If the Marina District becomes a state and natural historic district, as many owners hope, preservation of the restaurant, even with all the flood mitigation work required to make that viable, could earn a right investor a tax credit, nearly fifty percent of the cost. That could add up to a substantial sum. I hope the Schicks will continue their history of good stewardship by seeing the sale of the property to a buyer who will appreciate its historic significance and maintain it as a public resource, be enjoyed by residents and tourists alike for many years to come. I hope that the planning commission will take care of facilitating such an outcome and not commit something that would close off this exquisite spot for our local population and visitors." The attachment three C is from Paige, this is Paige Williams, last name's not standard. Oh, yes, excuse me, it's at the bottom. It says, greetings, planning commission board members. First off, thank you for, thank you for your service to the people of Colonial Beach. As a member of the planning commission board, I ask that you think long and hard about allowing RV campgrounds to be in Colonial Beach, and if it is in the best interest of the people of Colonial Beach, you hold the power to nip this in the bud before it would even reach council. I do not agree that it should be allowed, and know that many feel that, feel the same way. Thanks for listening. We have Paige Williams. Attachment four D, this was forwarded by, by Mr. Williams, Dave Williams, it's from Carolyn Frey. It says, terrible idea, town does not have the infrastructure for such a project for, for non-taxpayers. Ridiculous to even consider. Has anyone done a study on the implications to the town? I see no redeeming value to the town. It is the Marina District, not the campground District. Keep focused on the best ideas, not the bottom of the barrel. Carolyn Frey. Attachment three E is by Corey Ges, Kerry Ges. It says, the Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce would like to show its support for the Marina's efforts to add definition two of the maritime resort to the maritime commercial district. Moreover, it would be a new layer of attractions to enhance our tourism pull. The combination of marinas, boating, and accommodations would be an added stream of revenue to the marinas and the town. We recommend it be approved and passed by the council. From Kerry Ges, the Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce. Attachment three F is from William, William Rowley. Please forward this email to all members of the Colonial Beach Planning Commission. I am writing out of concern about the proposal that is before the Colonial Beach Planning Commission. I ask that you both know and not to recommend to the town council allowing recreational vehicles, also called RVs, to be used in the Marina District. This is the first residential beach community with old town residential streets, likely designed in the nineteen twenties. The town has not made any improvements or changes in those roads, with the exception that it been cased of asphalt here and there. These roads were designed to carry the weight of RVs constantly coming and going, oh, excuse me, these roads were not designed to carry the weight of RVs constantly coming and going. You know the town will not maintain the roads or enforce anything. The town has added, the town has not added or maintained the public sidewalks in the area since the nineteen fifties, despite residents begging them to do it, and all the public sidewalks are unusable in the areas where sidewalks are in non-exempt in most other areas. These residential roads are not designed for up to fifty large RVs coming into town each Friday and leaving each Saturday eve, or each Sunday evening. We are not talking about camping trailers. These are full-size RVs, eight to nine feet wide and forty foot plus long, possibly pulling a trailer or a boat. In warmer months, this is a peak time for people to be out using these narrow roads. Two RVs going in opposite directions would be unable to pass each other without difficulty, not to mention passing a fire truck or a rescue squad going on an emergency call. You also have to have the unavoidable large delivery trucks, occasional dump trucks, and tractor trailers. There is no place to pull over on Monroe Bay Avenue, which is, which is where all of these marinas are located. These RVs will completely block the road at every turn they make, assuming they can actually make the turns. RV drivers will completely block the roads. RV drivers are typically not professional drivers, buy an RV and, buy an RV and northern driver. This is a serious safety issue for town residents and visitors. I am only talking about the public streets, public roadways, and added risk RVs will bring to town, but there are issues with the marinas, but I will not go into that. Early happening in Monroe Bay are the, are the two streets that will be the most affected by this decision, since the Marina District is on those two, on those two streets. Most everyone who comes to Colonial Beach either rides... Okay, all right, that's the end of the talk period. Attachment three G is by Laura Brubaker. I understand that Colonial Beach Planning Commission will need to discuss allowing up to fifty RVs in the Marina District on June thirteenth at five thirty PM at Town Hall. I am a property owner of Colonial Beach. Please do not allow RV parking at the marinas. It's a horrible idea. It's a short sighted, it's a short sighted an idea as one can get. When I first heard that this was being proposed, I actually thought it was a joke. That's how ill-conceived the proposal is. Sadly, it isn't a joke. RVs will create tremendous traffic flow problems on already narrow streets. The wear and tear of the roads will be immense, and the, and the cost, taxpayers, more money that many don't have. Imagine the trash left behind, imagine the noise. The trash left, the trash left on the beach is illustrated enough, illustration enough of what's to come. Please read, please do not approve this, Laura. Attachment three H by Andrew Harrowburn. I saw on social media that there is some consideration regarding changes to the code that would create and or alter the code to allow for the creation of substantial RV camping facilities in town's Marina District. This concerns me. The town has invested a substantial amount of money into the next version of Colonial Beach, and I do not feel this RV situation is consistent with that. Many homeowners and businesses have invested in Colonial Beach, especially in the area with the expectation that there wouldn't be this sort of radical change in zoning, having the town shoreline looking like that across the bay. Having the town shoreline looking like that across the bay isn't what many expect. I'm also concerned with the infrastructure of Monroe Bay Avenue isn't exactly built for substantial RV traffic. Please keep us moving forward and not backward. Please pass my comments along to the Planning Commission. Thanks for your, for your time and all you do. Uh, sorry, Andy Harrowburn. Attachment three I from Carolyn McGee, McGee. Dear members, I strongly disagree with changing the zoning to allow RV, RV vehicles spaces at CBYC, Colonial Beach Yacht Club, or, or Center. This is a terrible idea. This would have a negative impact on our community, the roads, our services, dockside, and our beautiful views. I do not believe this is the growth of our towns, the growth our towns looking for to incorporate. I do not believe the long-term gain will be beneficial for our community. Please do not vote yes for this change. Thank you. Carolyn McGee. Attachment three J from Paige Williams. This is the second email.
Yeah, um, so I think we've heard one of those.
Yeah, she sent two separate emails.
Yeah, she's, yes.
Okay.
Out of fairness to everyone else.
All right, move on.
Yes.
Attachment three K from Billy. There's, there's no last name stated. It, it looks like it might be Wett, but it's not, he didn't identify his, his whole name or the name.
Oh, well, I think we should, um, not, not read that one into the record then.
We can't identify who it is or whether or not.
Yeah, so, but it's not going to be helpful.
That's purely up to you. I'm always felt that way, somebody does not identify themselves.
Yeah, so I, I knew that we'd strike that one.
Uh, attachment three L from Michael Hyde. This, uh, this really, this email is a reference to the discussion on the May ninth Colonial Beach Planning Commission meeting regarding the creation of a definition of maritime resort within the maritime commercial zoning district. I have been in and around Colonial Beach since nineteen seventy-six. I have a boat which I keep at the Colonial Beach Yacht Center, and also own a small camber. I also have a Commodore, uh, of the Colonial Yacht Club, which actually rented a portion of the building at the current Colonial Beach Yacht Center when the club was founded in October of nineteen seventy-three. At this time, fifty years, fifty plus years ago, the majority of yacht club members had larger boats that included full amenities, i.e. sleeping, cooking, and bathing facilities for overnight accommodations. Fast forward fifty years, the market share of boats sold are smaller boats primarily in the twenty-three to twenty-eight foot range with minimal accommodations for overnighting. Many of those owning smaller boats also own campers. They like to use those campers to join the club members when those with larger boats with overnight accommodation traveled to destination marinas. Originally, our club's travel destinations had to, had to have docking facilities, a restaurant, and a pool. In recent years, we have added local overnight accommodations, hotel motel, Airbnbs, and accommodation for members with campers. Our club of sixty-plus members usually has ten to fifteen boats and three to five campers during a cruising event. It appears the new trend for marinas is to include limited short-term camper sites. With this in mind, I feel that the conceptual definition two that you have proposed will help promote Colonial Beach as a playground with Potomac. I personally would support the limited number of camper sites for short-term stays at the marinas. Consider Michael Hyde.
Uh, Mr. Newley, would you like to share some of that reading so you don't have to do it all?
I, I've got a little more to do, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lagann.
Okay.
Uh, actually, that's, that's the last one.
All right, so the first one is from Patty Sciarri. Yeah, I have been reading about the idea of having RVs allowed at the marinas of On the Point. Uh, as a resident, I'll be at On the Point, uh, of Monterey Avenue, I'd like to submit my thoughts on this matter. Uh, on Sunday, we took our morning walk and all the way past the X House, an RV went uh, drove by us. As you know, there are no sidewalks, uh, not even the dilapidated version. Uh, it was reasonable, it was a reasonably sized RV, maybe twenty feet long, but after it passed by us, uh, it was obvious that it wa, it was wider than half the road. To have RVs of that size regularly traveling up and down Irving and Monterey Avenue, as the roads are built right now, uh, would be dangerous for anybody trying to get any form of exercise. Uh, it is already treacherous enough when one tried, uh, when one tries to walk or bike around anywhere on it. Uh, nowadays, RVs are forty feet long and can weigh up to ten thousand pounds. I can't imagine these roads, I can't imagine these roads were built, uh, to handle such heavy loads on a regular basis. An idea I have, uh, an idea I did have that might be beneficial to everyone is to drop the speed limit to twenty miles an hour.
Okay. That's good. Like that's.
Hold. Add a few traffic calming devices to Monterey Avenue, Irving, and Boundary, or a few four-way stop signs, uh, and make them all one-way roads. Split them two, two-thirds and one-third with a very wide yellow, uh, wide yellow line that has the vibration safety, uh, wake-up call to alert drivers if they are drifting. Uh, the smaller section, all, smaller section all the way around the point would be available for walkers, bikers, and runners. Uh, it would be an economical way to address the lack of, and, the lack of, and or deterioration of the sidewalks of these main roads of the town, uh, that have such spectacular large views. Obviously, I am not a municipal planner, and this may be a very simplistic thought, but to my, uh, but to my mind, it seems worth exploring. Uh, if that were, if that were accomplished and work, and worked well, uh, worked well for vehicles, and maybe RVs with a limited, with a weight, weight limitation, uh, could be considered. That's it for the first one. All right, next one is for Sarah Harrowburn.
She was, she made previous comments.
Oh, well.
Oh, and she's already. No, she's made previous comments on that. Oh, okay, cool.
I like, well, Mr. Hyde did as well. Mr. Hyde was on this first page of Tiki, and then there was a Mr. Hyde.
Yeah, and that was first Colonial Yacht Club. Yes, I thought I heard that twice also.
Okay. I'm trying to avoid the same person.
Yeah, um, so that was an error, and, but we don't want to continue that error. Thank you.
Okay, um, next one is from Connie Kennedy. I can't believe that this issue of RVs in the Marine District has even been brought up. Although I heard there is a potential buyer for Dockside slash, uh, slash docks, or slash yacht center to turn it into an RV park. So now I get it. Uh, it would be such a deterrent to have these large vehicles cruising through the entire town for all the reasons, uh, already brought up about the small roads, uh, about the small roads. Uh, the wear and tear to the roads, citizens no longer feel safe to walk dogs, ride bikes, jog, walk, et cetera. So there goes the charm and reason for some to live here. Uh, for what? For nasty diesel smell and bad roads, interruptions, traffic, et cetera. I don't even see the RVers spending much money in town. The owner of the RV park might benefit the most. And what, what would become of our dockside that adds charm to our town for everyone? Please keep RVs at the food line lot or on the outskirts. RVs can be self-contained for several days. They need not, uh, they don't need to, to be on hookups. Uh, they can tow a golf cart or car, rent a car, uh, rent a cart, take a taxi, or walk to town. Thank you for your inspiration. Uh, the next one does not have a name, so.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. It does have the name at the bottom. Uh, Barbara Bates and Kenneth Bates. Um, we think this is a very bad idea, uh, for the town streets. The, the roads are not kept up now, uh, so this would cause more road damage. This would not, uh, this is not what Colonial Beach needs at all. Too dangerous for narrow roads. All right, this one's from Alicia McLeod. Uh, good morning, uh, in this case, good afternoon. Uh, as a homeowner in Colonial Beach, I feel, uh, that allowing marinas or other areas within the town to rent RV spaces or establish RV campgrounds is a huge mistake. Our roads and infrastructure are not conducive to the large vehicles or trailers. Uh, groups of RV and camper, uh, RV and campers are a nuisance and an eyesore and will decrease the property values for the taxpaying residents and homeowners. If additional tax dollars are needed, I would rather, uh, they, uh, come from the existing short-term rental homes, uh, which does not put additional strain on our infrastructure and encourage lasting structure, uh, encourage lasting structure and, uh, property communication. To reiterate, I am strongly against allowing the change to the zoning or special exceptions that would permit RVs and campgrounds, uh, campground usage for marinas or, uh, other areas within the town. All right, this is from Kathleen Padlock. Uh, I am totally against this. The roads are narrow, there are blind turns, there are no sidewalks or impassable ones. People walk, people walk these roads, people ride bikes, golf carts. You're assuming the drivers, uh, of these Class A RVs are expert drivers. That is a dangerous assumption. The road surfaces, uh, are not tough enough, uh, to take these kinds of heavy vehicles. They will further wear down the roads. I say no based on safety. Okay, this is from Kathy Bockham, Don and Vivy. Uh, I am writing to express my concern for adding RVs, uh, to the by rights use, uh, under those, uh, under their zoning. I am opposed to marinas having RVs as part of the maritime commercial zone. There are many reasons. Access, uh, number one, access. The roads to On the Point are not designed for large vehicles. It is hard enough watching larger boats navigate down Irving, Monterey, Bancroft, Lawson, Marshall. These roads, these roads have trouble when, uh, there are two cars trying to, trying to pass. Yes, I acknowledge that Dockside has large trucks that deliver food, beverage, and, uh, beverages and supplies, um, but they mostly come in the morning and midnight, uh, not when there's much traffic. Nonetheless, uh, it is still dangerous for walkers, runners, and bikers, uh, especially since we have no sidewalks on those roads. Short terminals, uh, number two, short terminals. Uh, we just went through zoning issue within residential neighborhoods. Uh, the marinas are either, uh, neighbors or need access, need access through residential neighborhoods. RV guests, uh, are short terminals, uh, with added diff, with the added difference of transporting them and providing water and sewer. And number three, parking. In a general sense, with a few exceptions, uh, these marinas do not have the overabundance, the overabundance of parking spaces. The point has narrow, uh, has small narrow roads and cannot absorb on-street parking for overflow. Please consider the above, uh, please consider the above as you, uh, look at changing the use of the marinas. Docks, docks in the water for boats. Uh, if there is, if there's a marina, uh, that wants to add RVs, they should go through the, they should go through a conditional use permit that outlines the exact plan of how they address the above, including additional flooding, water, and sewer changes. All right, uh, next one is from Mary Ann Berry. Please accept this, uh, please accept this as our, uh, as to our concerns regarding the proposal for marinas along Monterey Avenue to allow for RV parking. Uh, on any given day, if there, if you were to set along Monterey Avenue, uh, you'd see a variety of, variety of vehicle pedestrian traffic. Large eighteen-wheelers, delivery trucks, pickup trucks, uh, pickup pulling trailers, uh, school buses, autos, golf carts, motorcycles, bicycles, people walking, parents pushing baby straws, et cetera. Point is, it's dicey enough with Monterey, or along Monterey Avenue. Adding RV traffic to the mix will only add to the dangers along, uh, this already busy road. It would seem only, uh, the RVs would, or the marinas would benefit, uh, from the approval of this proposal, certainly not the town residents. Typically, RVers, uh, are self-contained, they eat at the RV, they don't shop because they bring everything in their RV. We see no significant benefit to the town's businesses, uh, or business community. But would only add to congestion, uh, only add to congestion and dangers of, of our All right, next one is from Frank Renilo. Hello, I think welcoming the RV community to Colonial Beach is a great idea. It will be, it will bring awareness to our town, diversify the type of guests, tourists that comes, and provide an opportunity to support local and small businesses. As RVers, my wife and I, uh, visited many towns throughout the country. We had a great experience and create, well, we've had great experiences and created lasting memories of the people and history of each town. The RV community is comprised of young families that are looking for a weekend getaway to be full-time travelers. RV, uh, RVs very, very incited as well. Campers, camper vans, uh, to fifty-foot motorhomes. Uh, the best experiences were in the towns that provide easy-to-find information to, uh, of what they offer. Some offered no utility hookups and only allowed one-night maximum stay. Uh, some offered all amenities such as electricity, water, and sewer with, without limits to size or time of stay. Some were free of charge, some charged with fee. Every town provided, uh, what they could to accommodate, uh, accommodate invited guests. The town's beauty showed, uh, in, uh, the town's beauty showed in places where the town's people, uh, were involved in the project, from the full-time resident to the town's maintenance group. I am sure many details will, uh, have to be addressed, however, none, uh, none are in surrounded. I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure. Um, with that, I am willing to assist, uh, in planning and implementing this venture. Uh, the next one is from Billy, but it's not clear who actually identified, so.
Yeah, yeah. We need their names.
I'm, uh, sending them.
We don't have the person's last name.
I couldn't hear much of that.
It's the same person.
From our recollection is that it had, Billy had had Bill Wetz in the email address. So I think it's fair on offense, it's Billy Wetz, but something.
Oh, well, um, we think it's a duplication. Is that what we're agreeing to?
It's the same person.
Okay, so, so we'll not hear that one then.
Okay. All right, um, next one is from Chris, Chris Orperty. Chris, it's a party. Hi, David. Thanks for putting this info out there. I am a supporter of anything that brings new safe dollars to Colonial Beach. Do you know if the police chief and fire chief will be present? Both will have new action... New action plans to keep things safe in the area. Things that could make this work. Rentals no longer than two weeks, 14 days. Vehicles need to prove they are legal and safe and safety inspected. RV arrivals and departures should be restricted to certain days and hours as to not disrupt traffic patterns. For people thinking RV living is low-class, many RVs are costing over $100,000 these days. The days of shirtless hobo living... Shirtless hobo living are over. These new RV owners have money to spend, and most can afford golf carts too. I hope the new bill gets passed if it can be done safely. CB residents love to complain about almost everything, but this could add... This add could make the marina area an upgraded everywhere.
No name.
Yes, one of this is I peer. It's an anonymous identity. I read it.
I know who it is.
No, it is not their name.
And where he lives.
It's what?
It's an alias identity. That is not their name.
Well, do we have a...
Because I looked him up.
No.
It just says I peer.
Oh, okay. And so I think... There's consensus that not in all that.
In my personal opinion, anyone who's willing to use an alias rather than their actual name in order to provide a comment should not be allowed to comment.
I think... I think we agree to that.
I agree, even though I know exactly who it is.
I know who it is too.
Well, I don't know who it is, but I think if we're going to hear testimony, everybody here is giving their name, so...
Celeste.
So we have one more left. Is that right?
That's correct.
Correct. We have one from Benny Farrell. I am not in support of letting RVs... Sorry, one moment. I am not in support of letting RVs or trailers in our marina district. Safety alone should be enough to not support this. Most of us know this is a plot to make someone... Someone marina a more desirable feature to sell. It is not fair to the neighbors of these marinas to put up with what disturbance this would bring them. Say no to the recommendation of RVs in the marina district or any place in CB. Thanks.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:00 P.M. And now, we are open to discussions from the planning commission members. So the chair will open your own question.
Before we get deep into this, I have a couple of pieces of information for all the commission members to consider. I'm not going to try to push your direction in any way for or against. We've all heard the comment, and we've all seen the number of people that are either for or against this particular item, but I would like to give you some factual pieces of information. So the largest RV on the market is 45 feet. That's a Class A motorhome. Say again?
50. Could be 45 feet.
Agreed.
And towed by a...
I'm trying.
16...
Thank you, and we'll just confirm question two of the commission.
The largest Class A RV, which would be the heaviest thing that would be on the road?
Disagree.
Okay. 45 feet. Now, so people worry about length. So let's... Let's go to the VDOT regulation comment. So that we don't have to worry about anybody's opinion or speculation. According to VDOT... It is... Here we go. The limit for non-commercial vehicle... Make sure everyone can hear me. And I'm looking in Virginia's size weight requirement for trucks, trailers, and tow vehicles. Taken straight from the VDOT website. Weight limitations. Motorhome and bus. So a motorhome and bus, including load, which would mean including any trailer that it might be carrying, would be 65 feet in length. For a semi-trailer, could be 53 feet, including load. And for twin trailers, each trailer is 28 six per... But for combinations, there's no limit. Now, as far as width is concerned, the individual that is concerned that the RV took up over half the road is incorrect. The width requirements, the maximum width requirements on all vehicles in the state of Virginia is 102 inches excluding mirrors. So... And the reason for that is so they fit through toilets. So there is no vehicle on our roads that's taking up two lanes or a lane and a half. Not half that. Maximum height is 13 feet 6 inches. That being said, we all know weights are different on all of these different things. So I sent out an email earlier today asking the town what our two largest vehicles weigh, and I believe those two largest vehicles are our trash truck and our pump-out truck. Those, to my knowledge, from what I've seen, are two big things we have rolling down the road. And according to the... To the interim director of Public Works, our trash truck weighs... Where is it?
6,600 pounds.
6,600.
It's 60...
60.
Our trash truck weighs 60,600 pounds, and our pump-out truck weighs 66,000 pounds. There's no RV on the market that's going to be heavier than that. Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, so we're agreed on that. So when we consider length, if a large RV is pulling a trailer, there is potentially that it is longer than a standard commercial vehicle that'll be going up and down the roads. That's a thing to consider. As far as weight is considered, it is a non-substantial difference on roads compared to what we have driving on them every day. As a matter of fact, it's considerably less weight than what we have our own town vehicles driving on them every day. Now, do we want 100 RVs up and down our roads? I would have to say possibly not. But if we leave this as a definition in the... We need to define it. It's in the code. The word is in the code, so the word needs to be defined. We've done that with everything else in our code that has been a thing that did not have a definition. We defined it, whether we wanted it to be there or not. Now, leaving it as a conditional use means we are not opening the floodgates to every possible space coming in and just filling their spaces with RVs. It means if they choose to use RVs as a source of income on their property, they need to come back to us and request approval to do that and have a site plan, a site survey. They need to show how they're doing on power, water, sewer, all of those particular things. Now, as far as sewer is concerned, most marinas have a resource for that because they provide pump-out for the boats anyway. They might need to upgrade that. They might not. It depends on the marina. Now, if we're also going to look at how much space does it take? According to... Where are we? Here. Okay, so according to Virginia Administrative Code, subsection 5-450-70, location under the Department of Health, rules and regulations governing campgrounds. I believe in the definition of campgrounds, it's if you have five or more sites, you are considered a campground. And it states... Going to skip down directly to size. All right? Each campsite, including parking space, shall provide a max... A minimum of 1,600 square feet of space and shall not be less than 25 feet at its narrowest point. So doing math, 1,600 square feet divided by 25... Calculator's not counting up. I believe it's 64 feet, if I remember correctly. So at a minimum, if they have more than five slots, they are required to have at least 25 feet wide by 64 feet long in space. That is severely going to limit the number of places and the number of slots that are going to be available within our marinas. There are only two marinas that could even possibly support any that size, I believe, and that would be Bayside and Colonial Yawassee. So if we were to define it at some point in the future, they would still have to come back to us and meet our approval and follow the state guidelines for campgrounds. So those are all things that I think we all need to consider when we're looking at this definition and whether or not they approve it.
I wanted to remind folks, especially on the commission, when we were considering Eleanor Park back maybe four years ago. And we held a big community meeting at the school, and we took testimony from folks in town that were talking about the RVs there and looking at Eleanor Park as a potential site for RVs. We had a lot of discussion around that. And we determined... One of the things that came out of that was that Eleanor Park, and including the yacht club, is in the flood zone. And properties that are in the flood zone are restricted because when you're offering an overnight sleeping place, it is in violation of the flood zone requirements. So that's one thing in looking back where we were at Eleanor Park and the discussion that we had then. And so I think if we talk about looking at maybe allowing for a conditional use permit, which would require a completely separate public hearing. But if we did that, then we would have to look at one conditional use being approved, and then another, and another, and the precedence that sets would be, you know, a requirement that we would have a difficult time challenging a conditional use permit on the basis of having already approved one. So I urge that. And the other thing is that I looked at the gross vehicle weight rate for RVs, and what you define, though, are RVs that are not fully equipped and are not carrying a load. They're not hauling a boat. So those weight requirements will vary. And then...
Well, with all the likelihood, and I really hauling a boat is smart because the ability to kind of back that boat down around...
And we do see it.
It's almost impossible. You see it on very rare occasions, but it is exceedingly rare to see that. So that's an outlier. That's definitely an outlier. Now, carrying a trailer that might have a golf cart in it or a small car or something to that effect, I would not dispute that at all.
So I think there is some dispute over there, the actual weight. But what I'd like to do is open it up and get comments from other folks here on the commission.
Let's start with me.
Yes.
I speak from experience because I've had every kind of RV under the sun. I sold a motorhome last year and now have a fifth wheel. I sneak into town at 6 o'clock in the morning to be able to get to my house so that I don't encounter traffic. You do have to swerve out of your lane because the trees and bushes overhang into the lane. I've submitted work request after work request to have the trees and bushes trimmed to DOT specifications along Irving Avenue and Monroe Bay Avenue. Both were ignored. It's never been done. So you can either scratch up your $180,000 motorhome or you can swerve into the opposing lane and hope that nothing's coming. So personally, I come in at 6 o'clock in the morning. I go out to the storage area, and I drive in at 6 o'clock to avoid traffic. Number one, it's very tough making a 90-degree turn onto Irving Avenue or Monroe Bay Avenue. Go try it. Coming here, there was a guy with a boat behind his truck at the stop sign on Monroe Bay Avenue. I had to back up so that he could make the turn with a 24-foot boat. So I think you have to consider the nature of the beast.
I also own a 36-foot Class A, and I did the same thing. I came in early or I went out early so as to avoid traffic, which I think many RV owners do to avoid traffic because there are worse nightmares other drivers. And Irving was the road to use. It's the widest road going down the Point and the one with the most accessible entries and exits. I'm not going to call them easy by any shot, but I agree with your statements on the trees in those areas as well.
Mr. Christensen, do you have any comments?
Oh, you know I do. Yeah. I take a pretty different tack on this, but just briefly to my friends' comments here, I see people trying to turn off of a real thoroughfare, Washington Avenue, to get onto Division. And sometimes it takes the beer trucks and other trucks that are delivering such vital things down to Dockside that makes it so popular. They have to do backup three times to make that turn. But that's very different than... I just have a different take. I really... It's the zoning ordinances, you know, they have this wording at the beginning. And to me, that's important. I know they don't really have any legal value, but somebody at some time thought that was really important to say. Here's what the... Here's what it says about the maritime commercial MC district. "It encompasses the areas located south of Boundary Street to the southern town limits. The purpose of this district is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial activities related to water-oriented uses." That seems like a pretty restrictive definition of a district for to be put codified into an ordinance. But the point is... Realizing that the point... The point is the point. What we call the point consists of, on one side, the Potomac River, which you can't really put a marina on, but you can put lots of nice homes on. So it's an attraction for that. On the other side of the Point, we have Monroe Bay, which is the only place in town that you can have marinas. And we... I guess we have eight. So my point is that we defined this district, for some reason, as a zoning district, but we have no properties assigned to it. Then you look at the... Which article is it? Article 8, which is the commercial C1 district, where all of those eight marinas are located. And here's what it says the C1 district should consist of. "The purpose of this district is to provide sufficient space in approximate locations for commercial activities generally serving the complete town and located along existing major thoroughfares." Well, Monroe Bay Avenue, maybe you thought when this was written as a major thoroughfare, but it isn't a thoroughfare. It doesn't go anywhere. It... I mean, it goes from one end of the Point to the other is what it does. It's... Many people have pointed out here, it doesn't have sidewalks or curbs. It doesn't... It doesn't have a lot of things you would expect a thoroughfare to have, even in a small community. Like I say, Washington Avenue, Colonial Beach... I mean Colonial Avenue, that's a little different. But... But anyway, so we have a district MC where no such thing as a... I want to get the wording right. The maritime resort is either permitted or conditionally permitted. And then we have C1 district... I'm sorry. The MC district does have conditionally permit for a... The MC District does have conditionally permit for a maritime district, I mean maritime resort, but there is no such thing as an MC...as a MC District, at least as far as nothing has been assigned for that. So then you go to the C1 District where there's no such thing as a maritime resort permitted or...so my point is, I think maybe we're just getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. Can we...we need first of all to think about, why are all these marinas in a C1 District? Why are there any C1 Districts on the point? And then we can decide, okay, so if we can redefine them as maritime districts, then this whole thing means something to me. You know, you're talking about making a definition that doesn't apply to any active zoning area in our town. And so why can't we maybe figure out how to change this without trying to patch something that is wrong in the first place? I mean, that's the way it seems to me. And if we do that, then all of a sudden, if we change those to maritime districts, maritime commercial districts, then the existing permissions apply. As is said here, it's a conditional use. It's very possible that the future planning commissions and town councils would say, no way are we going to let RVs in there, but yeah, they can have a maritime resort with other things. I kind of disagree with Mr. Schick when he says that today, marinas and RV parks are a good combination. They're certainly compatible, but I insist what I said in the last month's meeting, that they are not the same thing. You know, you often see RV parks next to, but they're just different. A marina is not necessarily a tourist attraction. A marina, like has been mentioned here by some, is where people in the area locate their boats. Now, I'm sure there are people that go to our marinas from Maryland and other states and that kind of a thing, but they're not...marinas are not necessarily tourist-oriented, whereas where RV parks are. And again, I say they're like husband and wife, maybe, but I don't know. Most marriages still have differences between husbands and wives. So I'm going to shut up, but I don't know where to go from there, except to tell you that I don't think we should be deciding anything today, tonight. I really don't.
Well, in that vein, if we were...what we're really trying to do here is define a term. And the term we're trying to define is marina resort. And the reason why we're trying to define it is because the term marina resort exists within Maritime Commercial District, which exists in our zoning regulation, even though we don't have it assigned anywhere. And the problem becomes this: if we decide to assign a maritime commercial district to the area in which you're speaking of, down Monroe Bay Avenue to all the way to the Colonial Yacht Center, now there is the availability for the commercial, for the conditional use to be applied for to be a marina resort. Yet, however, there's no definition of a marina resort, and we can't...someone cannot apply successfully or unsuccessfully, shouldn't be able to legally apply for the conditional use of a thing that has not been defined within our code. That's it. Whether we leave RVs out of it, put them in it, whatever we do, we should...and even if we don't decide tonight, we still need to define marina resort for the purposes of the maritime commercial district.
Well, remember, you know, our job tonight is to look at definitions, and we're not looking at creating, you know, the MC zoning district and including, you know, what we want to see in that. What we're doing is looking at C1 strictly and doing a definition, not C1 strictly.
It's MC.
Yeah, MC. And what I want to suggest is that, you know, I think there was an opportunity when you're meeting with the marina owners, and I think that was a couple weeks ago. And nothing definitive came out of that. And so I think their voice isn't in this discussion here. And perhaps there is a reason for that, that there's not really a uniform approach or an agreed-upon approach by the owners. So I think you're urging to have us maybe step back a little bit and look at the process, maybe even include maritime resort, our commercial district, and define what would go into that resort area would be something that we could put on our work plan for the future.
Well, I totally understand what we're doing here tonight. I really don't think the public understands. I mean, from the comments that we've heard, you know, it's very...it sounds like it's very personal about one particular place in town and all this kind of thing. And I would totally understand if we, you know, go ahead and make a definition, but the definition is pretty meaningless right now. And so until we do something else, I mean, it could take three or four text amendments before anything could happen, no matter what the request was.
It's a very involved process, and it's more than one step, and that's clear.
I would agree that it's an involved step, and I would not wish that we necessarily flesh out the entire definition this evening. I don't know that we're going to be...that we're going to get to that part. And maybe we do need more input from the marina owners to help them be a part of this process. So be it. At the point to where we do make the definition, we...this is what I see. We've made the definition of a marina resort. That definition lives within the Maritime Commercial District as a conditional use. At some point in the future, the town could decide, whether it's through us or through direction of the town council, to assign the Maritime Commercial District to a specific portion of the town. That has not been done. So even if we, whether it's tonight, six months from now, whenever, define maritime resort, it simply lives as a definition of an currently unused zone in the town code that will eventually have to be assigned, which takes time. And then, once assigned, the businesses that fall within that, if they choose to apply to that conditional use, would have to go through that entire process. So not just for our sakes, but for the sakes of everybody here and everyone listening, this is not a tomorrow action. This is not a tomorrow thing. This is a very well down the road thing that will happen if it happens at all. But we still, one way or another, whether it includes RVs or not, at some point, need to define maritime resort.
And I think there's progress on that. I know we've looked at the discussion that the town council had about defining Marina Way as, you know, a description of, you know, what we offer here in our town. And so that process has, you know, begun, and maybe we could evolve that into a discussion of looking at the zoning and doing a text amendment to the zoning.
Chair, just to be clear, the council's recognition of Marina Way is really as a marketing point. It was really designed to provide a sense of place of where marinas are for marketing purposes of the marina owners to collectively market the area. It has no zoning ramifications whatsoever, just creating a place that can be identified for marketing purposes.
And I think that what Mr. Mack was saying is that the community isn't really fully aware of what the implications are. And just by looking at the fact that we have eight marinas, and that we've already begun looking at those marinas differently than what we have before, we looked at it in terms of the marketing for those marinas. That's one step. And I think as we go through the process, we can look at creating a work plan that'll allow us to take those steps individually that we need to do.
And to Mr. Mack's point, we are a planning commission. It's not today so much that we care about, it's the future. We may annex parts of the county that would be appropriate for, you know, different types of activities than are appropriate on the point, you know? And so I understand why we need to have these provisions. But yeah, we need to make sure there is transparency, that everybody understands why we're doing what we're doing, and beyond it all, I'd love to have the zoning ordinance up to date.
Yes.
Well, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion of this particular topic, add it to our work plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of this discussion? Ms. Kurtz?
I just want to follow up on what would really be the next step, because that was my question. I think what Todd's part of. So yes, first you have a definition, but we're not looking to add that to C1. If anything, we would be looking to take the marinas and put them in maritime commercial. And then that definition would apply from there, right? Okay. Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay. Mr. Tomlin?
I just had a couple quick questions. One, did the town council initiate the zoning text amendment?
I'm sorry.
Did the town council initiate this zoning text amendment?
No, sir. The commission did through a...through staff bringing it to you last month, or a request that we received from a member of the public, asking if camping spaces was a permitted or was allowed within the context of a maritime resort definition. We didn't have the definition, so staff brought it to your attention last month, and the commission at that time initiated the text amendment.
Perfect. What is the use status of a maritime resort, so the use in the C1 District?
There are none.
So is it permitted?
There's no...because it's not permitted, there's none that operate.
So it's not permitted?
Correct.
In the C1?
In the C1.
But in the Maritime Commercial Zoning District, the maritime resort use under laws would be a conditional use permit?
That's correct.
Okay. So yeah, eventually we will get to defining what maritime resort is, but for someone to put RVs on their marina, they would both have to go through both rezoning their property to Maritime Commercial Zoning District, and then create a conditional use permit that would allow them to have RVs which are within the use of maritime resort in their now rezoned Maritime Commercial Zoning District.
That's correct, but the definition would...we'd have to define, look at...
You've got to set up the definitions and go through those steps.
That's correct.
Okay, with that...
Just to be clear, this sounds a little hippy to me, that you have advertised for a definition. If you want to table that, that's fine, but I think you should table it to more of a definite meeting, that's what we're going to have. And if you're going to discuss anything else, you're going to need to re-advertise.
Well, you know, what's interesting, I hear you, that, you know, we took testimony and we heard testimony, and basically those that were in favor of allowing RVs, you know, the number, the ratio was two to one. So I think that there is an interest that we slowed down the process and that we tabled this discussion, and even though we've advertised it as a public hearing, that we are going to look at the definition, it doesn't mean that we have to do that tonight.
Well, I will accept any change that the first...that the maker of the...as a second, I will accept any change that the maker of the amendment wants to revise the...maker of the motion wants to revise to make it to a specific date, table to the specific date.
Or action.
I would ask the council, is there a preferred time limit? Is there not to exceed X amount?
I would prefer not to give a definite. It's going to be, you have a public hearing, but I think you have to have, if you're acting on something, you've advertised for a public hearing, you can't put it off too far. I mean, you could table it the next month.
And I would amend my motion to table this discussion until the next planning commission meeting.
I accept that.
Okay. Then we'll do a vote call, starting with Ms. Kurtz. A table or...
Table.
Okay, Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the desired outcome from tabling for a month?
To work out a definition. All I care about is definitions. Whether it's RVs or not, we just need a definition.
So the intent of the motion is to come next month with a definition to...would this mean, if it is not one of the definitions that we've advertised and or discussed tonight, require an additional public hearing?
I think as long as you start out talking about the definition that was advertised, and then make amendments there, too. You can do that.
I have a question in relation to the motion. If we were to table the motion and...or vote against it, if we were to vote against changing the definitions at this time, that would address the need for the requirement that we have with advertising, correct?
If you're to vote against any definition...
Any changes. No. I mean, we can change them or we can not change them.
So you're talking about...I don't quite understand. You vote against changing the definition. Are you talking about approving the definition as advertised?
I just had a question about not changing the definition tonight. There is no...
There's no definition.
Yeah, there's no...
Yeah, what I'm saying is not defining it.
Or you could choose not to define it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
You could vote not to define it at all.
Or we can vote not to define it at all and take it up at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter.
And you're going to have to advertise, advertise it.
Yes. And either way, I think we're going to have to advertise it.
Motion stands.
Okay, so then we're proceeding with the vote, Mr....
The motion stands. Next month, we decide on that decision.
So the intent of the motion is to come back and have a robust discussion about the two definitions that have been presented this evening?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yes, we'll go ahead and go with that.
And I vote yes, too. So the motion stands.
Okay.
So with that, we have to come back to the same issue. We can't hear new definitions.
You only have one advertised definition. You have to...you can amend that through your discussion, and you may amend it in the way that the second definition is that was proposed, but you got to start with that because that's what was advertised.
And it cannot be more restrictive than the advertised definition?
I think you have the right to, for the statute, to make it...oh, you certainly can...you can eliminate...you want to eliminate RVs from the advertised definition.
That's less restrictive. What I'm saying is that we cannot add a bunch of stuff to the advertised definition without materially changing that. I know we're teasing it.
Right.
Some nuanced thing right here.
The statute says that they make appropriate changes in the proposed ordinance or amendments as a result of the hearing.
Okay.
And we held a hearing.
Yeah.
So you're saying that we couldn't make that change tonight?
No, absolutely. What was in our capabilities of doing it this evening?
My only thing is that... My only thing is that, again, you know, the town people have spoken, and it's two to one on not allowing the RVs. So if you take that out of the definition, we have a definition.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
It has passed.
And it has passed.
Okay.
So we will be taking this up again at our next meeting. So with that, any more questions? And if not, we'll go ahead and move on to the final item on our agenda.
May I ask, do we have the five minute recess?
Yes, five minute recess.
There was some controversy about the town council saying they didn't like the US CAR CIP, and they were totally reluctant to do so.
All right, we'll go ahead and get our meeting started. And we're now on open business to establish and adopt the conditional work plan. We have a work plan, and we discussed that at our last meeting and I think it was the March meeting, yeah.
We...yeah, Chair and members of the commission. The, for various reasons, we've continued our work plan since the special meeting that we had, I believe it was March 26. And in mind, staff has revised the work plan based on the direction that I heard from that March 26 meeting and have created this revised work plan for your consideration. That's kind of where we're at tonight.
I'd like to go up the gun and move to approve the work plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bravo. Okay, and then with that, I guess that is the adjournment, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and with that, we'll adjourn at 7:55, 40, 50.